The meeting is now called to order at 5:07. Approval of the closed session agenda?
We have to do the roll call, President Ramos.
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Mims. Trustee Calhoun.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
Dr. Little has an excused absence. Trustee Lopez.
Present.
President Ramos.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Here.
Moving on to item two, approval of the closed session agenda, is there a motion?
Moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Lopez and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, can we have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item three, request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda matters. Do we have any requests?
No requests.
Moving on to 3.02, Compton CCD Board of Trustees Future Agenda Items Request. Do we have any requests from the board? Trustee Calhoun.
I would like to see a report, starting from 2018, all the way up to now, to how many board members have missed a meeting and how many retreats board members have missed.
Is there, is there anything else? Moving on to item four, recess to closed session in accordance with Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Sections 54950 and the following Education Section 72122 to discuss and, to discuss, to discuss and take action on the following items. At 5:10. We're reconvening now at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Mims.
Present.
Trustee Calhoun.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
Dr. Little has an excused absence. Trustee Lopez.
Present.
President Ramos.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Here.
Moving on to 5.02, pledge of allegiance. Trustee Calhoun, can you lead us?
Everybody, please rise. Do like they did in school. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, one day, someday.
Moving on to item six, report of actions taken in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54857.1. In closed session, the board took action to reject the claim of Lamar Kirk against Compton Community College District insofar as based on alleged injury occurring within six months prior to August 4, 2025, and to give notice that the claim is untimely insofar as based on alleged injury occurring more than six months prior to August 4, 2025. The roll call vote was as follows, 4-0 with trustee Little absent. And that concludes the report for closed session. Moving on to item seven, approval of the open session agenda, is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Lopez and seconded by trustee Mims. Are, are there any corrections, discussion?
Yeah, there's just one small correction. Item 14.05 in the narrative where it talks about the employee, employee retention tax credit. There's a typo there. We're, we're, it is maybe receive approximately $8.1 million.
Is there any other discussion? And with that correction, can we please have the vote?
Trustee Lopez, do you have a verbal vote? Yes. Do you also need a verbal vote? What's your verbal vote, student trustee Mims? That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item nine, request to address the board of trustees on agenda or non-agenda matters. 9.01.
Yes. Ian Aguilar? Regarding welding.
And you, you will have three minutes and a timer will start once he starts speaking.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Ian Ricardo Aguilar. I'm here, I'm a student here at Compton College. And I have a letter of concern here that I've written on behalf of the student body of the welding department. So I'm writing to express a growing concern shared by many within our welding program. For the past three years, we have been in the process of establishing a welding test certification lab. Despite having the necessary equipment, infrastructure, and groundwork in place, progress has stalled reportedly due to bottlenecks at the executive administrative level. This delay is directly impacting the future of Compton welding students. Without access to certification testing on campus, we are at a significant disadvantage in the job market. While the Compton Certificate of Completion is a step forward, it doesn't carry the same weight or legitimacy as the industry-recognized welding certification when it comes to the employment opportunities. The solution is already within reach. With the facility ready and the community of students and instructors eager to move forward, all that is needed now is administrative support to remove the final barriers. By certifying students in-house, Compton can become a vertically-integrated training and certification center, equipping students not just with the skills, but with the credentials that truly open doors. We respectfully urge the administration and board to prioritize the finalization and activation of the welding certification lab. This would have an immediate and measurable impact on the student's success, job readiness, and the long-term reputation of Compton's welding program. We are ready to work collaboratively to bring this vision to life. All we need now is your support. Thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Emily Rubio, regarding the welding department.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Emily Rubio. I'm proud to say I received my welding training here at Compton College. That training helped me launch my career. Today, I serve as the first female welding lead at the largest steel company in the United States. I am writing not only for, as a former student, but as someone who deeply believes in the importance, importance of accessible technical education. I am dearly disappointed to learn that currently welding students at Compton College, after completing their training, are being told they cannot take their certification test on site. As someone who sat in the classrooms and worked in the same labs, I know how much effort, time, and trust these students invest in the program. The certification is not a luxury. It's a bridge between the classroom and the real job. And I actually need that certification as well to continue moving up. To remove that step after the students have already completed is unacceptable. The college has fully equipped LA City and AWS accredited testing facilities that remain unused. That resource was created to empower students, especially those who might not have the means to travel or pay out of pocket, which I was in that situation as well. Leaving it idle while students are left scrambling for certification opportunities goes against the very mission of the community college to serve the community. I recruit employees for our company and the welding department from here in Compton College. There's, this certification helps them move up and, and in the base scale as well. I am truly disappointed to hear that there is a fight open to, open up a test lab. I urge the college to reconsider the current positions prioritizing its students. Welding industry is growing and companies like the one I work for are constantly in need of certified welders. Compton College has a talent and facilities. It simply needs to follow through and commit to their students. Also, I was, I was actually, they wrote an article about me here at Compton College. And I think it's super important that, you know, we, we actually help out our students because this is something that, that they deserve and, you know, it opens gates. And I should be, I, I can't go to college. They're actually offering me to speak about this, but I, I want to speak on something that the students have. So the only thing I'm holding back is just waiting for, for the students to be able to be certified here. Because, you know, I have to talk about how the Compton College students are able to receive the help and, and everything they need. And right now, I just, I, I can't believe that they're going through this. But thank you, guys. And if you guys have any questions?
We, we can't engage with the speakers, but we're taking in what you're telling us. Thank you.
Cameron Pryor, regarding welding.
Hello, my name is Cameron LaBarre Pryor. I am a representative of the welding course. I started my welding journey in 2023. And here's what I have to say. It's clear to me that your focus is not on the students' needs, rather what's wanted for the students. Many of us want more for ourselves and have chosen a path of welding. Perhaps you think that you know better than what is best for us because students are young. But I'm here to say, it's not the case. My primary choice of course was welding. I also took real estate. Both paths. My professor's name is, uh, sorry. Pamela Richards. She not only helped me polish my skills in welding, but gave me a path to follow when the school of choice, Universal Technical Institute, failed to give me what I needed. She allowed me the opportunity to take the LA City Certification, to which I passed the first portion after paying a good amount of money. So you can imagine my surprise and disappointment when I was told that I wasn't able to test through the lab that she was, that she has certified. This decision not only affects younger students, but also people of color who struggle in the industry the most when it comes to welding or construction. If not for the help of Ms. Richardson and other factors, I would not currently be employed in one of the biggest aerospace companies in the U.S. I urge that you guys reconsider your decision in the welding course in general. Thank you.
Anthony Donato, regarding welding.
Hello. I'm Anthony Donato, a welding student at Compton College. I put time, money, and effort into this training program with the full belief that I will be able to test for my welding certification here on campus. Ms. Richardson just helped me to attend my very first welding job. I do not have a car. I fully expected to complete the degree program along with my welding certification, but I just heard that the administration is not allowing, not allowing us a test. Honestly, this feels like we were misled. Seems like me enrolled in good faith, trusted that this program would prepare us and test us. I'm just asking the college to step up and honor that we were told. We deserve better than this. Ms. Richardson has invested thousands of dollars in equipment that just sitting there and just collecting dust. That's it. Thank you.
Deborah Askew.
Along with this administration, Dr. Curry and previous special trustee that under their leadership, Compton College has failed to thrive. Low enrollment, low retention, low graduation rate. But after listening to this young man, I'm gonna skip a couple of things. Someone wrote on Facebook regarding the new structures that Compton is so proudly putting down. It's from Joyce's daughter. Yet vocational schools are constantly overlooked. Would love to see your graduation and placement rates. Not to say it's completely the school's fault because it's CCCDY, but to advocate for funds for a new training facility rather than a robust wraparound student support system to support every student effectively or a strong career placement focus and team working to build employer relationships to get students placed with employers based on the new skills they have obtained. Let's advocate for that. Curly, clearly, this doesn't seem that the objective of this school is not student education-based. This gentleman along, the welding equipment for a certificate to be gainfully employed. Why should they have to beg, ask for something like he enrolled in good faith? Employable skills here, more than just residential, residential. The house students, take care of your own. Take care of the community before you venture out and spend money. That's all.
Adrian Gomez.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Adrian Gomez and I am a student in the welding department. I come to you to vocalize my frustration with the way this school has handled and affected not only me, but other students as well. I, as well as other students, have been deterred from welding and been told to join other classes. I went to the counselors and told them I wanted to do welding, but instead was told to go into air conditioning, get an associate's, and had an ed plan specifically for that reason. Once it was revealed, I was not able to take air conditioning due to the fact that this school did not have a teacher in order to teach the air conditioning class. I received no help in going back to my original wishes of joining the welding department and was sent away to go do everything by myself. I am not the only student to be deterred and sent away, and if this continues, I won't be the last. I would not have an ed plan if it wasn't for Ms. Richardson and Ms. Victoria, who helped me in order to get not only my ed plan, but to continue my schooling here and finish in order to pursue a career that I originally wanted. I hope that this school would encourage others, students like me, and not turn them away from careers that can make or break their lives, that can not only help them, but help others as well. This school is here for the community, and I wish that it would help this community instead and not hurt them as it has hurt me and my journey in this school. Thank you. That's all that I needed to say.
There are no more requests.
Moving, moving on to items 9.02, Compton CCD Board of Trustees Future Agenda Items Request. Are there any requests from the board?
Uh, future agenda requests. Yes, just can we have some information on, um, what the welding students are talking about? Update on it.
Are there any other requests from the board?
Yes, if I could, if I could ask, not just of the, of the welding program or the welding department, but if we could have a review of all the CTE programs to ensure that we are aligned with the required certifications and certificates for those particular programs.
That concludes item nine. Moving on to item 10, Board of Trustees Meeting Minute of the July 21st, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
One second.
Moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Can we please have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item 11, reports from representatives and employee organizations. Associated Student Government Report, Brielle Johnson. Academic Senate Report, Dr. Sean Moore.
It's green now, okay. Good evening, everybody. I hope your summer's been going well. It's nice to start coming back and I'm enjoying, enjoying coming back and looking forward to attending our flex day this Thursday. So on August 8th, I've requested some meetings with the district from the executive board, so I'm looking forward to getting those settled in. I also was able to provide the district our institutional standing committee document. We have, we're coming in with two vacancies. One on the calendar committee for our faculty co-chair, and the other one is for enrollment management committee, one faculty representative. So I'm looking forward to getting that filled. I've already put out some emails. On August 11th, I was able to disseminate the Golden Returns, a regional look at the return on investment of California's community and career colleges to all of our faculty to review. I wanted some feedback from the faculty to see what they thought, so I created a OneDrive document that allowed the student, the faculty to read the, the, the survey and the outcomes, provide some questions and some feedback and some recommendations. So I look forward to going over that document at the Academic Senate meeting on September 4th for some feedback. In order to facilitate those conversations, I invited Michael Itskowitz, who is the founder and president of the HEE Group, EGA Group, to present specific information regarding Compton College that was utilized in the data to help facilitate that information. Some examples already on the document that's on our OneDrive that's gone out to the faculty is to review our work experience education plan to potentially utilize our work experience 95 courses into our CTE programs and other programs on the college. Those are just a few. But I'm hoping that in the future, I can bring back formal recommendations from the Academic Senate to the district and potentially have maybe a task force under the Academic Senate that can get together and look more specifically at the survey and, and that information. The Summer Collaborative Governance Work Group has met on July 7th, the 21st, and on August 6th. And we've been making some good progress, so we're looking forward to getting that information back and finalizing that document during the fall. Broadly and without providing any names, the Selection Committee for the Compton College CM Services has been meeting in the summer with the AMT Provay Contractor Recommendations to the district regarding our different facilities that's coming forward. And that concludes my report. I want to thank the Board of Trustees for your ongoing public service to our college, and I hope you all a successful fall 25 semester. Thank you.
CCCFE Certificated Employees Report, Dr. David Chavez Mendez. CCCFE Classified Employees Report, Amenqua McKenzie. That concludes our reports from representatives and employee organizations. Moving on to item 12, presentations. Compton College Mesa STEM Center, Dr. Curry.
Yes, I would like to have, I would like to have Dr. Berger to introduce his item, please.
Good evening, Board of Trustees Members, Dr. Curry, public. It's my pleasure to introduce Lorena Fonseca, Mesa Program Manager, for tonight's presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Next slide, please. Oh. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so our table contents for today. We're gonna start with some grant information, student data. I'm gonna go over the, our center services in student engagement as well as our STEM achievements and some student stories as well as our future plans. So just about our grant. Our grant is entering our third year. It started in January 1st, 2023, and ends in June 30, 2027. We are required to implement eight Mesa objectives that help increase the number economically and educationally disadvantaged students to transfer to four unit institutions to increase the rate calculus-based STEM majors, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We also required to implement 13 We also required to implement thirteen components. Some of the components require our students centered, uh, provide academic excellent workshops. Uh, we focus mainly on physics and chemistry in our space uh as well as a Mesa orientation. We just finished our Mesa orientation last week. It wa- it was composed of three days. And as well, there's more uh of our um components that, you know, include uh building some uh space with industry. Now, for our twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five academic year, we have thirty-five participants. Um, it was very male dominated as STEM is with uh sixty-eight point six percent and uh female were thirty-one point four percent. Our ethnicity were uh background, uh, ethnic backgrounds for our students were twenty-five point seven percent African-American Black, sixty-two point nine percent Hispanic Latinx, and eleven point four percent Other. Our most popular major is Engineering with forty-two point nine percent, so we're transferring our students into Engineering. Um, second is in the Sciences, so I like to group Biochemistry, Geology, Environmental Physics. That was thirty-one point one percent as, and as well as twenty percent of Computer Science and Math majors. Um, in terms of ages, they range a little bit, uh, eighteen to twenty-nine. This, this academy, past academic year, we, I had a kind of young population, I think, but very well spread. And some of the services that we provide, so we, again, we, our focus is uh supporting our students in those calculus, physics, chemistry, and computer science, but we also promoted a lot of internships and other extracurricular opportunities. Um, it is very important for us for our students to get hands-on, uh, hands-ons. So when they transfer, they are able to put something in their resume and they're more competitive against other transfer students. Uh, and also in col- in collaboration with our counseling, we help our students coach and support them through the transferring process. That is a goal and the end goal of Mesa, getting more bachelor's degrees and uh coming to college program is, is, is a is part of it, right? So in terms of engagement, we expanded our, our programming, so it was our second year, right? We increased our programming by a hundred twenty-five percent. We included field trips, conferences. Uh, in the pictures you guys can see, we took some students to the National Diversity in STEM Conference in Arizona. Uh, we had our orientation in Disneyland. We did their, their physics workshop, right? So they got to learn a little bit of physics and have some fun. Um, and then we took a couple of students to the Silicon Valley Women in Engineering Conference in San Jose, trying to empower women so they can keep their STEM uh engineering degrees, right? And uh also, our Mesa Student Leadership Retreat had two, three of our students participate in April. Um, in terms of student engagement, so again, we are an academic program, so a big chunk of our programming is academic. I think like maybe seventy-five percent. I don't, I have a lot of them listed here. I'm not gonna highlight all of them, because then we'll be here all day. But uh, we did implement our Prepping Your STEM Journey um Worship Series this last academic year. It started with academic counseling in the summer, and we replicated that this past summer too. Our students were already had uh ed plans, they're in the wor- already had their initial transfer uh conversations with a counselor way before uh most other students, right, before the semester started. Um, in the Prep Your STEM Journey uh Worship Series, right, and we also did um uh time management with crafting your schedule, landing the scholarship, professional glow up that many of students use when they were going to conferences with skills, and bulking your resume, those internships, right? The other program I wanted to highlight is our Annual STEM Week. This year, uh, with partner, with assistance with, from Dr. Curry, we had a UCI take over. So our students loved it because uh three out of the four events, they got to really see what um UCI has to offer them as a major. We started with a graduate student panel. So if they're thinking about grad school, and then they were part of our science symposium, they did some tabling as well as they were part of our judging panel, right? And lastly, we took a field trip to their um, to their campus, and they got, our students got to see uh bioengineering uh lab and our chemistry lab. So they really got to see what it feels to be a student at UC Irvine. Um, and of course, we have a couple of social activities to create that community. We have our annual Mesa Social in the fall, and then our end of the year celebration in spring to highlight some of them. Other engagement that we have is our Explore STEM. We just finished our four-year with this high school program. It's actually mainly funded from the summer camp budget, uh, but our Mesa students are student workers, are student leaders, so they get a lot of leadership opportunities from this. Um, the whole goal is what it is, is to have our high school students to explore STEM, right? And right here, I have a little uh, two pictures of two students that participated the first year we have uh explored STEM, Fernando and Andres. So they were incoming freshman students. And now, four years later, they're actually starting Costa LA under, one of them is gonna be electroengineering, and the other one is gonna be mechanical engineering. And this is what their mom had to say. I'm gonna read what she sent me. Explore STEM allows the boys to academically advance. We're incredibly grateful to Explore STEM for reinforcing their passion and inspiring them to pursue their, this path. So our students with the program were able to reinforce that love for STEM. But um, something, the, the message of saying is that those students also took advantage of the enrollment opportunities. So while at Compton College, while, while they did their four years at high school, because that's one of the workshops they get to see in our program, right? So this is kind of wrapping up uh, seeing that the program is helping them uh reinforce that passion for our STEM. Um, other handsome activities, so we have a very active STEM club on campus. I am one of the advisors with uh Professor Shrikis, our uh physicist instructor, and some of the pro- projects we are currently working on is Rocket Project. In the picture, you guys can see that uh some of our STEM club members were able to participate in Steam Fest and teach some of the students how to make rockets and just get, ignite the passion of, you know, building rockets and going into science, right? We also have a garden project on campus. I highlighted the balloon, which we just launched in July, and our astronomy project. And our students really interested in having star parties, and again, engaging with the community. Off-campus commu- uh, activities, I won't go over all of them, but um, I wanna highlight one of them. Uh, Law, Long Beach Compton Data Science Learning Community. I had uh Raviyan Ross participate this summer. She's about to present. So she got to see what data science is and got to engage uh with a social problem. And she's gonna present what she got, uh, got to learn. It was a summer program. It started mid-July, and it's about to end this uh Friday. Some of the achievements, so we have nine of our Mesa STEM uh students transferring to various camp, uh, mainly uh, mainly cost, costis. So we have um, Cal Poly Pomona, Sinadine Contreras is going to the, to the campus for physics, and we also have Costa LA. You're gonna hear from one of the students who's transferring. Uh, uh, we also have Costa Long Beach, Costa Dominguez Hills, as well as, this is my first, well, actually, it might be my second one. I have one student going to Humboldt, so our Ca- California State Polytechnic now, University Humboldt. So yeah, so they're going all over California this time around. Um, and some are alumni, so I'll always like to share what our alumni are doing, and some of them got to share with me that they graduated this past year. Uh, some of them shared, I, I have Stephanie Silva, who is he, she graduated this past spring, biology degree, and then currently studying for the MCAT. And we also have Ricardo Benitez, who will be, who graduated this past fall, and he's actually studying for dental emissions test because he wants to be a dentist. Um, and yeah, so I actually brought two of our students to share what they, how, you know, their experience with the program. Someone else introduced Moira Nigges, who is transferring to Costa LA uh under mechanical engineering.
Good evening. Um, so I want to share about the Mesa program and how it's impacted me here. The Mesa program has shaped my time here at Compton College and has equipped me for tu- with tools necessary for a successful transfer to my new institution. From the field trips to the conferences, I was able to further my educational and career goals. Through workshops and projects, I learned invaluable lessons of work ethic and leadership. And I actually was the lead for the High Altitude Bloom Project, as well as STEM Club President for two consecutive years. I also found community in my peers through the program, which made my time here much more enjoyable. Tomorrow, I start mechanical engineering classes at Cal State LA. And while any transition can be nerve-wracking, I know that I am taking with me all of the academic skills that I have honed through the Mesa program here at Compton College, and that this skill set will propel me towards my degree. Thank you.
Thank you, Moira, and then um, Jukwan Williams, who is transferring to Costa Dominguez Hills, Computer Science.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jukwan Williams. So my major is computer science, and I'm currently enrolled at Cal State Dominguez Hills. I enjoy digital art, coding, and making animations come to life. The Mesa program has impacted my life to a great extent. Through the Mesa program, I was able to meet new people with like-minded, minded ideas, as such as students in the astronomy project. In the astronomy project, I was also able to learn and operate telescopes and go to a few star parties as well. Through the Make It Happen project, I was able to learn and improve my teamwork skills and my leadership skills. I also learned a lot of tips through the workshops that they have and time management as well. The staff of the program were extremely supportive and encouraging as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jukwan. And so, uh, what are our future plans? Well, strengthening our mission at uh of Mesa, at Compton College. I want to continue hosting our orientations, but my vision is having a week instead of a day or two days or three days where we can really prepare students before they even start their semester. Um, I want them to attend more uh scientific conferences, more field trips, something I haven't done yet, this industry, and this is what my goal for this academic year, so I hope I report next year that we have at least one industry field trip and then provide them more technical skills. Um, actually, in the works of, uh, with Costa Dominguez Hills to do a three-D printing workshop this winter, so they get more skills to be added to their resume. Um, any questions?
Trustees.
I have a question.
Yes.
I could be looking at this wrong, okay?
Yeah, 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 go for it.
So, uh, on page four.
Okay.
Ethnicity.
Yes.
Okay, you got, who are the other?
Oh, uh.
Who are the other?
The other is may, is um Asian, and then some of them are mixed race, so just put them together.
Okay.
Yeah, mixed race, yeah.
Okay, so. So I guess when you do your reporting, you say other, you're going to inform us of the other ethnicities, right?
Yeah, I ca- yeah, I can, I can provide the information.
Put them together, but.
Yes, yes, yes.
They're not all what you just said they are.
Okay, I can put that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I wrote something else down. Okay, on, did all thirty-five of the ones that you had here, did they attend all the conferences, one conference, no conference?
No, it's very hard to take all thirty-five. Uh, we, for our physics workshop, we did take a, a good chunk, which was twenty. Uh, our students were able to participate, and some of them were not able, able to themselves have work and couldn't make it that day, so we actually got, it's very hard to get those twenty, uh, to get that hundred percent due to their other commitments. But yeah.
So do they miss out when they don't go on the trips, the tours?
Uh, well, yeah, they, they get offer, and then if they're not able to go due to commitments, yeah, they won't be able to participate, yeah.
Back up.
Yes.
One second, so I can understand.
Yes.
So if they are not able to go on any of the tours.
Yes.
What happens to them?
Oh, no- nothing happens. This, this is a plus. Yeah, it's a extra uh experiences for them. Sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, no.
No, that's okay. I probably didn't say it right. So you choose them on the basis of if they can go or not?
Well, it's actually participation, if they're coming to our center, putting in the time.
That's participation, right? If they can go or not, is that correct?
Yeah, and yeah, and then we get start offering them, you know, uh, uh, the spots that we have, because it's really hard to take them in students.
If they are not able to go to any of the conferences.
Yes.
For one reason or another.
Yes.
What happens to them? They still graduate? What, what happens to them?
Yeah, they still, uh, they're still part of the program, but they are actually required to meet with me once per semester to check in. So I do academic progress meetings to make sure that they're doing okay, because we want to see them in the center. We want to be able to be successful and we need to capture that, we need to prevent that, right? So um, not, they can still be in the program, it's just they still need to make contact.
And do they make contact with you?
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, on page, the page where it says student engagement, where it said Mesa Student Leadership Retreat in Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Uh, there was only two that went?
No, three, it's three of them. It's, those are the students, so.
Oh, those are the students.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And the one for Silicon Valley, that, that are the students also?
Yeah, I think there's, uh, I'm in the picture, but yeah, that was, that was it. Yeah, that was my only engineering students. I think one is non-engineering, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity, yeah.
So, in, in the pictures that, that you took, or whoever took them, are they all Compton College students, or were they a mixture of other students?
No, they're all Compton College students. They, they have to per the grant, yeah.
Okay, so, under achievements, it say nine Mesa STEM students transferred to four-year colleges or university in twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. What happened to the other twenty-six?
Uh, so they're still in the process to transferring, some of them, and some of them, to be honest, some, I had probably two or three each, uh, major changes. So they can't be part of the program anymore, and they're no longer in a calculus-based major per the, per the grant.
And so, for the ones that had major, major changes, were you able to find out why and were you able to offer? Let me finish, because you're getting ready to talk.
Go for it, go for it.
For the ones that were unable to complete or finish because of major, major issues.
Yes.
Were you able to have a conversation with each one of those students to find out how you could help them or, or whatever, even if, if they couldn't complete it? Were you able to find out their issues, the reason, and why?
Yes, so the two that come up my mind right now.
You have to tell me why. I just wanted to know if you were able to ascertain.
Yes.
Why they had to drop out of that class.
Yeah, well, yeah, they changed them, yeah.
So. How many students that start the program and how many end up dropping out and it, because of one reason or another? And how does that affect the program and the amount of students that are required? How do you only end up with thirty-five? What is, what is your outreach?
So our outreach looks like is we start, well, as you can see, I, I'm starting even in high school, right? So our, our reach right now is even starting in April when we go and advertise our Explore STEM, but we're also advertising Mesa for the incoming freshman students. Then, uh, the first week, uh, we go into the classrooms and advertise the program um, and see they qualify to join our program. Um, sometimes if we are, time allowed, we call them the week before. Um, like this week, we're gonna do, start some phone calls for the target courses. And then we'll continue halfway through the semester to do more phone calls. Uh, so we target courses that we know the students will have to take, and then we target, uh, we go ahead and give them a phone call too. So that's how it starts, and it replicates the same thing in spring semester.
So you go into the high schools?
Uh, though, we, we have been going in April for the high schools, uh, because we're advertising Explore STEM, but we're also advertising Mesa, and then then once the semester starts, so August into the and we're going to the classrooms. I think where our last classroom visit is probably in March. We do another phone call in April to see if we can more students from our Compton College students. Yeah, so it's ongoing every month, yeah.
So, okay. So it's our Compton College students that's coming from Compton Unified, Paramount Unified, and all the other schools?
Those are the cl- yeah, those are the campuses.
And so how many, how many schools do you visit?
I cannot think of, oh, how many, but we, we visit.
Different schools?
Yes, yeah, we, well, outside, uh, are Peter's Schools. Yes, yeah, we, well, outside, uh, are Peter Schools. None, none of our, we go to language, uh, both Language High School, Paramount, and then of the three, uh, Dominguez. Yeah. Yeah, we don't go outside, um.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
So you said Dominguez, you didn't mention Centennial.
Yeah, Centennial, Compton.
And now that Compton High is back in the original place and is not on a landra.
Yeah, we hope, yeah.
So you hope, or are you going over?
Oh, it's the plan to go in April, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And when you go to the high schools, uh, do you have to go through the counselors and talk to them, or you just go talk to the students? And do you talk to the students like at a, at a, what do you call the things when they go into a? Do you, how do you talk to the students? How do you reach them?
We do a little bit of everything. We, uh, start with educational partnerships here, and then we also do, uh, couns- counselors, right? Uh, in the high schools, we connect with them, and we also, um, uh, get the list of our instructors that work over there, and we hit those up. Sorry.
Trustee Calvin, can I, can I, Jack, can I make sure?
No, I was asking her the questions, but you can.
But do you want us to give you, because you asked a lot of questions about the outreach and how we do outreach to our students?
I always ask about the outreach.
Do you want us to be able to provide you with a follow-up letter and the board with a follow-up letter?
No, because that's just more work for your staff to do. I'm, that's why I'm asking her the questions now, so that you won't have to go back to your staff and ask your staff to do a report for the board. That's just extra work on your staff, so, I mean, she's standing before us, isn't her job to answer the questions?
No, no, she, she is asked the question, but I think you're asking some questions regards to the details I've raised to outreach, and she asked about the timeline and when things happen. And I think it'd be important for not only you, but also for the board and also the audience, to know how we're doing our recruitment for the program, and when the things, certain things happen, we can be able to document it for you as well, and I think it'd be a good informational item for the board.
I think that she gave me some pretty good information, but if you want to have your staff do the paperwork, then have your staff do the paperwork. I think that young lady stood up there and represented her job and what she's doing very well, and she was able to answer all the questions. But once again, Dr. Curry, if you want your staff to do it so the rest of the board members can get that information, help yourself. But she answered my questions very good, I thought. So I believe she know her job. Thank you so much for all your answers.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
I wanted to know, I was listening to you talk about going to the off-campus workshops and activities. Do you also have panel experts come to the campus? Perhaps to fill in the gaps for those that are unavailable to attend, and also,
Yes.
do you have partnerships with industry experts that come and share with the students as well?
So that's what I'm working on for the second of the year, but part of our STEM week, that's what we do, is just changes by depending on the theme. Like I said, this past year, with the UC Irvine as a takeover, and they will focus on grad school in having our students think about PhD programs, right? But the previous year, we had a, a, uh, industry panel. So we're probably gonna bring that up this upcoming May, so it just kinda, it's theme, you know, so yes.
And they, and they come to the Compton College campus?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and also done like both remote and in-person modalities. Uh, our STEM week has transformed a lot, you know, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
So the, um, so the max, the, the number of students is the, I believe it's thirty, is that the max?
Oh, no, that is not a max, yeah. We don't have, Mesa does not have, uh, a, a max at the, at the moment, yeah.
You also mentioned the students, like with the outreach.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Of students to see if they qualify.
Yes.
They have to have, um, they have to be in a, in a calculus-based major.
Yes.
But so when some of those students say that they express an interest. Is, um, with part of some of the work that's helping in the lab, is it, is it an opportunity to help those students get, say if they need to get to that proficiency with, with math in particular?
Yes, so, um, our center currently service all students, as long as they're taking the course, we're support, we're supporting. So meaning that the chem, the academic excellent workshops for physics and chemistry, you don't have to be Mesa to, to be, uh, u- utilize the space, right? Um, and so I had in the past, uh, students that come in as nursing majors that started, um, engaging with the STEM club and ended up actually transferring as biology or another, biology and chemistry. One of them is actually in the slide, and one transferred last year's biology. And that now is even considered a PhD program, but when she came and engaged with us, again, as a nursing student, I cannot give services, but the STEM club is student-run, right, so they can engage in those projects, right? And so that's why I helped the student confirm their chemistry degree, confirm the biology degree without us closing the doors, right? So that's a different relationship, and again, a lot of our students have the potential, but what do we see all the time? They see nurses, they see, you, you get me, so that's a direct path to a career. But, you know, my goal is to get beyond that, right? Yes.
And then also you talked about, um, just really quickly, you talked about the, um, um, promoting the internships. And I know you said that, um, one of the things that you're working on is like industry.
Yes.
Um, partnerships.
Yes.
Is there some in particular that you, you know, what are some of the barriers that you're facing with that?
Um, I don't have a network yet, so that's what I'm trying to build to. So that's, you know, the partnership with the, the, the university is very easy, because you meet someone, a student, uh, a, a program man, one of our students, and so they create that connection, but, but yes, but we're working on, because I do have alumni now in industry, but they're young, right, they're, they're just starting industry, so I'm in the work, so it's gonna take a little bit to have something. But yeah, but we're working on that one, yeah.
Okay, and then like, um, my last, um, question I wanted to ask. Um, we already talked about, oh, um, I already kind of know this answer, but I want her to share it for the record. So if, um, um, if Moira, if Moira and Joaquin, um, I know Moira has, if you could ta, because we're talking about, um, the funding. And we know that, um, you know, finances is one of those, you know, one of those barriers. So I would like to, if you could share, Moira, if you could, if, huh? Ms., Ms., Ms. Moira, if you could share, um, the funding that you receive, the, uh, you know, like the scholarships and the assistance that you received to transfer, um, to Cal State LA, and again, congratulations. And, um, and Miss, what, Mister?
Jokwan.
Jokwan, if there's something, um, similar, if you could just share that, please, I would just like to. And this is just to encourage, you know, other students that are like, you know, that are interested, and just to kind of help them see a path, you know, forward, say beyond, um, Compton College. Thank you.
Well, I think one thing that's been really beneficial to me is I've actually been able to be employed in the student worker position through the Mesa Grant. So before, I had been working a part-time job, and it took a lot away from my studies. Um, but I started getting involved with the Mesa Program as it came about in my time here. And then Lorena gave, offered me a position to like, uh, be paid for these kind of extracurricular projects that I was becoming a part of. And so I think that was really beneficial, because I was then able to not take part in those different parts-time jobs outside of school, but be paid at the school, and so I was spending more time here, spending time on campus, able to go from one thing to the other, and so I've been paid for the different projects that I've led. Um, as well as I've been the physics workshop facilitator for the past two semesters. And so I think, I, I haven't got any specific scholarships except for, well, through the Mesa Program, Lorena shared with me a scholarship that I got to Cal State LA, that is gonna be immensely beneficial in my time there. But yeah, by say, getting, getting paid through the Mesa Grant and to do those extracurricular activities and take part in that research has been beneficial for staying on campus and getting more work done here, and also being able to take part in a research position instead of working at a coffee shop. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, um, I just want to say, um, I am so very proud of you. And I wish you all the success, because what was shared in the presentation, this is a male-dominated field. Being a Latina and also being a woman, I want you to go and I want you to blaze the trails. I want you to blaze the trails. I'm so very proud of you, and I want to wish you all the best success as moving forward. Thank you.
So similarly to, uh, Moira, thanks to Lorena, I actually didn't have to work at like another job. Through Lorena, she actually knows some people at Dominguez Hills, or the staff at Dominguez Hills, and she was able to get me a job there, work at the fabrication. So I could just work and go to school there. And also, I am part of the guided pathway careers at the, at Dominguez Hill. Again, I got that through, uh, through Lorena. She hit me up on the application and on the due date and got on me, and thanks to her, I'm in the program. Thank you.
And also, I, I would also like to congratulate you again. You know, we saw the numbers, and we know that, um, in these fields, um, that African-Americans, and particularly males, are not represented. So again, um, I think you kind of said like some, some, some of that futuristic stuff. I think what you said, like coding and doing some other, you know, all that kind of stuff that you, like your generation, what you guys like to do. But again, congratulations, and I wish you all the best success in this next, um, journey. And if I could add, um, Dr. Curry, um, if we could, in addition, I think what would help, um, is those particular scholarships, internships, and funding programs to kind of help our students, like why they're, why they're here. Um, because again, like we said, we know that funding and, you know, one of the major barriers is, um, you know, funding your education. So you've heard, like, both students having the opportunity to be here in place and to work, say, in community while they're doing their studies, is very helpful and beneficial to them, especially when they are transferring to either the UC or the Cal States, so that's how.
Trustee Calvin, you want a letter? There you want a letter? We can add that to it.
Trustee Dopplermore asked that. I was explaining to you, and I said if any other board member wants it, then you could do it, but she's satisfied.
Because we know that there's a lot, um, in particularly with like women in STEM, and of course, I think I say this all the time. You know, we have, um, um, we have Raytheon right up the way, we have other industries that are close in this area. And those particular industries and corporations, they have, um, they have, um, opportunities and parts of their program to service, um, Black and Brown students, and especially students from underserved areas and communities.
S- s- so trustee Dopplermore, I think it's, when you think about what's happening right now in higher education regards to workforce development and also return on investment, I think colleges are trying to figure out ways to link to industry, not just in creative education, but all majors. And I think this is a perfect time that we have these conversations about STEM and linking to industry, and how do we actually engage industry as it relates to employment of our students, not only full-time employment, but also apprenticeships, internships, and workforce development opportunities while they're Compton College students. And I think this is a conversation that's happening nationwide, but also on our campus, we have those conversations as well, so it's a timely conversation.
Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
I just like having fun with Dr. Curry.
And the next presentation is the twenty twenty-five Compton Community College District Final Budget Assumptions, Dr. Curry.
Like I haven't been at the podium ever, so, uh, you'll ask questions now, huh? You wonder what's going on. So I'm here today to present the final budget assumption. As you know, I'm also serving as the, uh, Vice President Minister of Services as it relates to Compton Community College District, and overseeing the budget. So this is our budget assumptions. Uh, last spring, you received the tentative budget assumptions about April. You received the final, uh, tentative budget, you've seen the tentative budget at the June board meeting with the board approved. So today, we're gonna share the, uh, final budget assumptions, and this is the information that we have as of today uh, from the state of California and also from California Community College Chancellor's office. So I have a cup table of contents, a couple of things. Uh, one is the budget assumptions, the next steps, and also to answer any questions that the board may have. See how I do? So our estimated beginning balance for the, uh, for our final budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, about seventeen point eight million dollars. We're in the process of closing our books, and, and we're writing about, uh, that number, could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more. But we don't anticipate it to be that much of a difference between, uh, our, our beginning balance. So we, we're assuming seventeen million, eight hundred thousand is our beginning balance. This is the amount of money that's been brought forward for the previous year. We also anticipate fifty-four million dollars in state and local resources, uh, sources coming for the state, for the, for our budget. Uh, that includes the, um, our state apportionment and also our local, uh, funds that we receive from the, from our local community. Uh, our general, our budget is set to, uh, for the fifty-nine eighty full-time equivalent students, which is our whole harmless amount. It includes the cost of living, just about two point three percent. Uh, we also included, uh, for the employee retirement system, the Calpers, which is about twenty-seven point four percent, and also Calsters, which is at nineteen point one percent. And I was actually looking at this the last, uh, couple of weeks, regards to the amount of increases that we have seen in the employee retirement system over the last ten years, and they have, they have increased significantly uh, for, not just for our district, but the state of California. We're also projecting, uh, utility increase of about one percent for the district. One thing I want to put, put on the radar for the board, as we look at these new buildings coming online, we could be looking at these, uh, increases, uh, over the next couple of years, significantly increasing. When I look at our physical education complex compared to what we have now and what we're building, we will see significant increases in that area. So we're gonna start to look at that in the next couple of weeks, regards to projecting out our utility increases for the next five years. Think about, we, we don't have a pool now, but in a couple of years, we will have a pool. But also the facility that we're building is significantly larger than what we have. And so it's very important as we move forward that we, uh, look at the potential utility cost increases over the next couple of years. We also budget for a culinary arts position and also fire technology position. Uh, right now, we did not hire for the culinary arts, we have a part-time faculty member for that, and also fire tech. We will be going back out for culinary arts sometime this spring, and fire tech, uh, we're waiting for the state approval. And once we get the state approval of, on our fire program, then we'll move forward with filling the position. We have already conducted final interviews for that position. Just talk a little about the budget assumptions. We include one-time, uh, budget augmentation enhancements, a hundred thousand dollars for enrollment management. We actually have right now with the enrollment committee, uh, they have their output proposals, and hopefully get the recommendation in the couple of weeks for some of that funding. We also included, uh, one-time augmentations of a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, and we're going through the prioritization process, uh, currently, regards to that. And then also we have money for the summer enrichment activities, as, uh, Ms. Lorena Fosseca talked about, the summer enrichment activities. This is where that funding comes from. This helps to fund the band camp, this helped to fund the STEM, uh, BESA camp that they provide. It also helped to fund the new, uh, program we have for our communications program as well. But we really made a commitment the last couple of years of engaging our local, uh, community regards to summer enrichment programs. We also set aside money for our line of credit debt payment of seven seventy-five thousand, zero six nine. Uh, we're still anticipating paying off our line of credit by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. We also budget for our other post-employee benefit liability of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that's a yearly amount. As you look at your, uh, board agenda, uh, in the information section, we, we include the, uh, our payment schedule for the line of credit and also for the other post-employee benefit liability. We also designated some of our reserve, uh, and this is yearly item. We have a fund that's designated for our, uh, enterprise resource planning system, which is our banner system. We also set aside forty thousand dollars for the personnel commission, which is the, the startup cost for the first year of the personnel commission. But please note that every year, that's an ongoing cost for the district. We also set aside six hundred eighty thousand dollars for our guided pathways, uh, program on our campus. And then the next slide, I could talk a little bit more about the guided pathways. So as you see, we have some interfund transfer outs. Uh, the one I want to pay closer attention to is the six hundred thousand dollars in property liability fund. If you, if you can recall that the state legislators, uh, passed and the governor signed a bill regards to, uh, child molestation cases and that there's no statute limitation. And so we were a part of the, uh, JP, uh, Joint Powers Association. And so what you see happening is that with these cases that are coming to light, they're asking for additional money. So prior years, we had about four hundred thousand dollars set aside for that, and now we set aside about six hundred thousand. And based off of our projections from our, uh, JPA, our previous JPA, we've, we feel that six hundred thousand is a good number to use, and we used this number this last year. We set aside again a hundred fifty thousand dollars to help support the Child Development Center Fund, which includes the cost of the operation. Basically, we're paying for the director position for the Child Development Center. And then the connection to the guided pathways is to transfer out from the, um, from the, uh, reserve, the two hundred seventy thousand dollars for the guided pathways program, and the work that we're doing guided pathways. We also set aside seventy-eight thousand dollars regards to our bookstore service contract, which is what we. We also set aside seventy-eight thousand dollars regards to our bookstore service contract, which is what we're paying the vendor to operate our bookstore. And then we also have some transfer out to the capital outlay for the additional costs. We transferred out six hundred thousand dollars for the Vision Performing Arts Complex. As I mentioned prior, that the, the construction cost for that has increased. And our board item today is to transfer another, to, to request from the board to utilize some of the employee retention tax credit to help pay for that project because it was not a bond-approved project. And so this six hundred thousand and the other item that's on the board agenda today will be enough to cover the district match. When the district, trustee Calhoun, I see your, your reaction. When the district passed the bond for Measure C, the original two thousand fourteen, the Vision Performing Arts was not included as their project. And so it's very important that we keep our commitment to what we took to the voters. And that was not included, nor was included in the Measure CC from fall twenty twenty-four because that project was approved prior to that item being placed on the ballot. And then another transfer out is a one point five million dollars for our enterprise resource planning system. And that was a part of our five-year budget that we're doing this year. Just some of the next steps as we move forward. We have the final budget will be presented to the board at the September eighth meeting. As required by law, we will have the final budget released and available this Friday to the public. It'll be available in the president's CEO's office and also at campus police. We're also updating our five-year fiscal management plan to be in alignment with the, what we're doing right now with our budget, closing the books. But then also the, also the budget that being brought forward to the board for September eighth. So they're all in alignment. So you can be able to see based off what the unedited actuals would look like in addition to what's been budgeted for this next year. We also will be submitting our Compton Community College District update regards to repayment of the line of credit, which is required in statute, and that's due to the state by September thirtieth. And will be submitted before the end of the month. And then also, we're developing the five-year fiscal management plan for our technology infrastructure, which is in alignment with the board trustees' goals that are on the board agenda for this evening. And what we're doing is we're looking at all of our technology costs over a five-year period to make sure that they're in line with our budget. So we can make sure to continue to support our technology infrastructure for the district. And I have no title, but I'm taking questions.
Trustees.
Hello, Dr. Curry. I have a question. So you read my mind because you knew I was going to ask you the question about that, right? I'm so glad you saw that look on my face because I was about to go to it. But I have a question. Do you think that Calpers and Calsters will be increasing anymore? I know they have been, I paid attention to the increase and how they've been doing it, look like what every year, every two years or something like that, they end up elevating more.
So I was, in our five-year budget, we have anticipated increases for the Calsters and Calpers, and we can provide that information with you. But I do, I do it right now with regards to state budget and finances, I expect increases across the board. I expect increases regards to the retirement. I expect increase regards to utility costs. Right now, I'm assuming increases in all areas as we move forward. But yes, we can provide that data for you. And we have that projected out for the next couple of years.
With the increases you just put in.
So we project that.
Well, thank you. You already answered my other question because you saw the look on my face.
That's all.
Are there, trustee Dopplemore?
I was going to say I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Curry.
Come to the podium, no questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Moving on to item thirteen, consent agenda, trustees. I'll go in order on trustee MEMS. Are there any items out of the consent agenda you want discussed?
Not at this time.
Actually, can I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Lopez and seconded by trustee MEMS. Trustee Calhoun, are there any items?
No, they, he gave me my answer to the question that I had about thirteen point seventeen. So I, I have an answer to that question, so I don't, I don't have anything else.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Yes, I asked for thirteen oh two, board policy twenty-seven, ten. And Dr. Curry, I think it's, if it was.
Oh, if, if you could just, is, is that the only, the, the numbers where we're? Trustee Lopez? Okay, so going with thirteen point zero two? Trustee Dopplemore? Yes.
Can you do thirteen oh two and can you also, yes. Thirteen, can you do thirteen oh two and also thirteen oh six? I believe it's.
Thirteen oh six.
What's, what's your question?
First, my question about, my question about thirteen oh two, I know I asked for that. But I, I really think it's also, Dr. Curry, if we could look.
Yeah, yeah, and we're working with legal counsel regards to the, the AR, and so it'll be brought forward in the near future.
Okay.
The amount regards to, the, the amount regards to donations, am I correct?
Yes, and, and, and the last, just to clarify, the last update that we have on that is, is twenty twenty?
Yeah, but it's every, every five years. So we, we sent it to our legal counsel to review and we're waiting for feedback. But we do have the, the limits regards to that, we can provide that to you as it relates to the FPPC. If that was your referral.
Yes.
So we can share that with you. The FPPC limits.
Okay, so with that, then if I may ask that when we, when it's, when we get the response back from legal with that, can we then come back and review both the BP and the AR twenty-seven, ten?
So the A, the, the BP is, from my perspective, is, 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 is what we receive from the, from CCLC with the language, the more, the question that you're going into is regards to the AR, regards to the, 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 the limits. And what I'm saying to you is that the limits are based off of the FPPC and what their requirements are. And we can share that with you regards to FPPC. But when the AR comes back, it's going to be the same information that connects to FPPC. But when the AR does come back, the BP will be on agenda as the information item. You will see both, yes. But the, but the, you don't need the BP and the AR to be approved at the same time. That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, thank you. And that's all, that's all I really had on thirteen oh two.
So thirteen point zero six?
Yes, thirteen, thirteen point zero six. If I. Never mind on thirteen oh six. There's no question on thirteen oh six. That's all I have on the present.
Are there any other questions before we go to a vote? Can we have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Chair, may I ask if we could just review?
I, I don't know what's going on, but if you want to like revisit it, you gotta, you gotta do a whole vote to come back. Where you have to have two-thirds to revisit it and then do a vote again.
May, may I make a motion to go back and review thirteen oh eight? Do you want me to state why?
You, you're making a motion.
Yes, may I? You want me to say why in there? You want me to say why? Okay. And the reason I'm asking, and it's just for clarification, and it's on the.
I, I, I think you should save that. Someone needs to second her motion first. Sorry. You, you second it?
I'll second it just so that she can talk about it.
You, you, you motion to, to revisit?
Second the motion, now he. To.
To revisit thirteen oh eight.
All voted together.
Yep. You got it? Dopplemore?
Yes.
Your vote is to?
My motion is to, is to go back and review the consent agenda.
Can, can we please have the vote? Trustee MEMS?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
And so now we need a motion to bring the consent agenda back, move, move to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
And now discussion, and trustee Dopplemore?
Yes, the discussion for thirteen oh eight. If we could look at the order. The general, the, under the, the PO line items, all the way down to one oh eight. For the Network Cable Solutions for one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven fifty. Is that, is that a duplication? Because there's, one oh eight is listed twice. And the reason why I'm asking is because there are also other line items with the same vendor name, department, and the PO number is different. So that's why I was asking. Yes, it's network cable. It's on, it's on the first page. The, the PO number ending in one zero eight. Yes, towards the bottom. There's a duplication for the Network Cable Solutions. The same amount, but the, the number is the same. So I just wanted to ask for clarification on that.
And, and I don't know the answer to that question right now, but I can get back to the board of trustees on that.
Is there any further discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
It's going to take me a second because I made a mistake on something. Okay, it's available. That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item fourteen, action items, fourteen point zero one, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six, Board of Trustees' Goals. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero two, Board of Trustees' Vision Statement. Is there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Lopez and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Can we have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero three, Administrative Services Resolution Number Zero Eight dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-five B. Resolution authorizing the use of the lease, leaseback structure under the state Lease Revenue Bonds Student Housing Program, the Compton College Student Housing Project. Is there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Dopplemore and seconded by trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion? Can we please have the vote? Oh, did you have?
I just wanted, just to, just to clarify, the only, the only change now with this agreement is because we're adding student housing. Is that correct?
No, this, this is, this goes back to, we had a presentation to the board. I want to say it was in November of twenty twenty-four, where we talked about the, the legislation that was passed regards to a loan program for all community college facilities projects. And so what happens now, depends on the conversation with Department of Finance first. But what will happen is that the money that we receive from the state will be returned, and they will give us the money through the lease revenue bonds. And by doing, by doing that, the property where the housing is located will be leased, the prop, the land will be leased to the chancellor's office until the loan has been paid off by the state. And we brought this forward to the board previously, and the, the issue goes back to the, with the cash of the state regards to the grant program. This is the state situation that we're in. My goal is that hopefully we, we will not be a participant because our project will be done by the time they figure this all out. But these are new forms that they asked us to complete, and so we'll be working with them, we will work with the state. But these are new forms that they asked us to complete, and so we'll be working with them, we will work with the state chancellor's office, and also with the legal counsel of the state chancellor's office to finalize these documents.
Trustee Dopplemore? Oh. Is there any other discussion? Can we have the vote?
Trustee Calhoun? That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero four, administrative services, Compton Community College District Resolution Number zero eight dash eighteen dash twenty twenty five C, budget transfers, budget transfers and augmentations for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Lopez and seconded by trustee Mims. Is there any discussion? Can we please have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero five, administrative services, resolution number zero eight dash eighteen dash twenty twenty five D, resolution reserving a portion of the college's potential employee retention tax credit to support the visual and performing arts complex project. Is there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Mims and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Trustee Calhoun?
Dr. Curry, can you explain that one more time so I can go through my head?
Okay, so, in the employee tax credit, we, based off our numbers that we receive, we're receiving, we receive about eight point one million dollars. Of that, four million dollars was designated by the board of trustees in twenty twenty three to support the basic needs services for the district. Then the other two million dollars was designated at the April board meeting to support the visual performing arts complex. And so then the remaining, what we have to do for our project is another two million dollars for the visual performing arts, which gives to eight million dollars. And so we have approximately about a hundred thousand dollars left over that has not been designated. And so this is a board resolution, so when the money comes in, we can be able to transfer that money to that project, which will support the visual performing arts project, which was not included in the bond funds. And that information is included in the resolution as well.
And that's why it's called the employee retention tax?
Yeah, yeah, let me, I can explain that a little bit. Let me go back for a little bit. Thank you, trustee Calhoun. I think it's important to go back to the start. So when, when we first, with COVID, we had some, we continued to pay employees during that, it's based off the subject organization. But then also we continued to pay employees and student workers during that time. And so there was a tax credit that was available to organizations that had less than about five hundred employees. And so we were, we submitted our information to the federal government about a year and a half ago. And now we received one check, regards to it, actually received two. We just received another payment last week, and we have one more payment that we're waiting to receive. And so our total anticipated receive is eight point one million.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Can we please have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero six, administrative services contracts over a hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred. St. John's Community Health Center. Is there a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Dopplemore and seconded by trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we have the vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Now moving on to item fifteen, discussion and action. Fifteen point zero one, Compton College Full Time Equivalent Students, Dr. Curry.
I would like to have Dr. Berger provide the report on where we're at, and then also regards to enrollment, and also Vice President Jones. We'll be talking about the staffing, which was brought up at the last meeting. Dr. Berger.
Hello again. Our F T S. I'm sorry, I'm having. I'm trying to open, I'm trying to open the attachment. Sorry. There's a lot of attachments. I'm trying to open the enrollment comparison one. On fifteen point oh one, Heather, it is the second attachment. Thank you. So, this is as of last week on Thursday. Our enrollment was down, and our seats filled was down six point seven percent, and our F T S was down seven and a half percent. But as of today, this morning when we ran new numbers, our F T S was down six percent, and our seats filled was down about five percent. Our head count was down two point seven. So our numbers have improved slightly from Thursday to today. And again, as I explained at our last meeting, that we're really not gonna understand the full impact of the fraudulent enrollment activity from last fall that we're comparing against until the end of the term. So we are making some headway. We still have quite a bit of dual enrollment to process and en-register students. Our educational partnership team is out at our high school sites every day this week with multiple people at different sites to facilitate application and registration. We're missing about half of our enrollment at CAMHS, and we have been in contact with them to facilitate the process through dualenroll.com. In addition to our other programs at our feeder high schools. That is our hugest chunk right now. But we're continuing to make progress. By this time last year, a lot of our dual enrollment was already processed, so I think that's also skewing the comparison. Dr. Curry, anything else?
Good evening, board of trustees. Dr. Curry, upon request, we have included in this year, this month's F T S report a staffing section. It's right under marketing. There it is. So, this is reflecting what our staffing levels were for twenty four, twenty five, and then also what we're doing moving forward. In twenty four, twenty five, we had four dual enrollment specialists. One point five of those dual enrollment specialists are paid for by Compton Unified School District. We have these respective accounts and budget strings that are covering the additional dual enrollment specialist from our budgets with retention and enrollment. And also moving forward, we have established a dual enrollment budget specifically to cover our dual enrollment specialists. The work of the dual enrollment specialist is to help support our high school partners. They do support early alerts, they help with progress grade monitoring, they help with admissions and enrollment work. They do dual enrollment and registration support. We keep a lot of the data of the students on grids, and so they help monitor those grids for the enrollment and tracking enrollment and students through their progress. We also utilize them a lot to help with the coordination with our K twelve partners to maintain scheduling and communication as a liaison with K twelve partners to help support retention, enrollment, and scheduling of students throughout the process. For twenty four, twenty five, we had a total amount of two hundred and seventy six thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars that were spent on salaries with an additional thirty two thousand nine hundred and fifty one dollars and eighty one cents on benefits. And we expect that in twenty five, twenty six, there will be a slight increase in that. And we'll be moving forward again with covering the cost of those dual enrollment specialists with our partner, Compton Unified, paying for one point five specialists and then two point five coming out of our dual enrollment budget for this year.
Is there any questions from the board?
Moving on to item fifteen point zero two, twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six emergency operations plan. Dr. Curry.
This is for first read. This is an update to our emergency operation plan. The board of trustees, I think at the June board meeting, approved our contract with Keenan to work on our plan. This is a first reading on, this week Wednesday, we're sharing it with the Health Safety Parking Committee for their review. Today, we shared it with the Council of Counsel and talked to them about this. And we'll be bringing it to the board in September for approval. And so this is connected to our board policy, but it's also, it's more important that we're able to update it to reflect some change that were needed.
Item seventeen, board policies and administrative regulations. Dr. Curry.
So you have several board policies, administrative regulations that are on the board agenda for this evening. I just want the board to know, we're doing a lot of work with regards to board policies. So tonight, you see a couple of the board policies that we're bringing forward as we move forward, but what's important is item number seventeen point zero one is the schedule. Item seventeen point zero two is the item that I forgot to bring back again, was the communication protocol that we worked on, that Helen Benjamin helped us work on, regards to the board members and board members' communication. And I could talk about that just a little bit. So let's talk about communication between and amongst board members. It also talks about communication between board members, the president, CEO, and also staff members. And then it also talks about public communication by board members, and then also social media communication by board members as well. And this is something that came out of the board retreat about a year ago, regards to communication amongst board members. Also, we have the update of board policy regards to the board election. There's just some minor changes regards to the trustee seats, and where they're at, we just changed the dates to make them reflected. But also too, just to keep in mind for the board, is that the, in the election years, that the board meeting has to occur or after the second Friday of the election season. So this year, we had, this past year, we had an issue, we had to move the board date because it was before the second Friday. And so we had to make sure we'd be mindful when we do the schedule during the election years to make sure that it's the first board meeting, organizational meeting, is scheduled after the second Friday of that month. In December, sorry. Also, you see the emergency response plan, that's the emergency regulation, that's seventeen point one two, which connects that policy. So we've been just updating board policies for the district, and we're doing pretty well as it relates to that. And that concludes that information item.
Moving on to item eighteen, information items. Dr. Curry.
So as the board approved the, we have a couple items. One is the, we have the Compton College twenty twenty five, twenty seventy six goals. Just for information. One thing I do want to mention to the board is something I'm looking at as relates to our institutional planning is actually looking at our goals and making our goals a two-year goals. Because that would inform the planning process for the district. But they're also bringing forth the recommendation to the board of trustees, that the board of trustee goals are set on a two-year period. And then you're able to assess the goals every year. Because what, one of the things that I think is important as we do this work is that we want to make sure that the goals are informed in the planning process. So right now, the board, the college goals are done in June, the board of goals are done in August. But that is for the current year, but then our planning for twenty six, twenty seven begins in a fall of twenty twenty five. Does that make sense? So, we're doing all the plans for this current year, twenty five, twenty six. We're doing that in the spring, the goals. But the plan for twenty five, twenty six are, the program plans for departments are being done in the fall of twenty twenty four. And so one of the things that I want to bring forward is changing that cycle through our annual planning calendar to bring it to a two-year goals for the district and also for the college and also for the board. And that means the goals will inform the planning for the programs and departments. That's some of the work that's been done out of our goal setting for the district. Also, just want to highlight item number eighteen point zero eight, eighteen point zero three, sorry. We continue to work on our institutional set goals, and also we're working on a program level and also support programs, and also aggregate programs, institutional goals. We're moving that forward. We provide an update on the Oliver W. Connor Estate and where we're at for the district. Also including information on the foundation for, our foundation for Compton Community College District, which is item eighteen point zero eight. Including that is the presentation. Can you please open that for me, Heather? So including that information about when the foundation was reestablished, it also gives you the dates of the meetings. Their next meeting is scheduled for August twenty eighth at five thirty P M. Also includes the members of the board for the foundation, which is on page five. Item number, number six, page six of that, includes the officers for twenty five, twenty six year. We're also a vacancy because we're looking for one Compton Community College District faculty member to participate. And then you also have the goals for twenty five, twenty six, which includes hiring a program manager, a foundation manager. Their, completed annual report by December eighteenth. Implementation of the online donor system, and developing a five-year strategic plan by January third, twenty twenty six. They also fill vacant positions on the board, establish and sustain an emergency grant program. They want to organize or support two events through June thirtieth, and then create their annual budget by June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And so we have some remaining things that we're working on as well, as they prep for the August twenty eighth meeting. These are items that are being worked on. If the board has any questions, please let me know.
Trustee Calhoun?
Is there any way you can make it where people that want to donate, it's the foundation, right?
Yeah.
To the foundation, where, I mean, can you make it easier, like, they can use their PayPal, they can use their Zelle, they can use their Cash App instead of writing the check, because, okay, so this is twenty twenty five. Now, come on, y'all. This twenty twenty five, there are so many individuals that have Venmo, Cash App, Zelle, PayPal. This is another one I can't think of. This is one I hadn't heard of, but somebody told me about it.
So trustee?
Yeah, they got Chime. I mean, really seriously, y'all, y'all should, y'all, the boys should think about that because people, a lot of people do not use checks anymore.
Trustee Calhoun?
Am I saying the wrong thing?
No, you said the right thing. But on page eight of the presentation, one of their goals is the online donor management system, where people can be paid online.
Okay, I've skipped that one, I'm sorry.
But that's the goal.
But it is eight o'clock.
That, that is.
Had a board meeting in a long time. I see why I'm dropping.
That is the goal, but I will say out of your comments is to make sure that all forms of payment are accepted through the online system.
Exactly.
That's where we're trying to go.
I would love to help the foundation, but I ain't writing y'all no check. I don't have no checks. I might want to use my Zelle, because it comes right out of my credit union. Okay, so, so Dr. Curry will check it out, and he'll let us know which ones we can't use, and then whatever which ones we can't use, that's what we won't use. I use no checks. I ain't giving y'all no checks.
Trustee Dopplemore?
I want to. I'm not gonna let this. I want to. I'm not going to let this go. Y'all should stop saying something.
Also, I, I think as well, if we, if there's other philanthropic days, for example, Giving Tuesday was a very, is a very big day. And I remember last year's Giving Tuesday, I don't recall that there was an option to give with your credit card. And if that is, and if that has been since updated and changed, that's, that's good news. But I think this is a great opportunity for the foundation to do online, use that, that campaign as a way to raise money for the foundation.
So that's why the October thirty-first is there, as the deadline to have that set up. Because we want to be prepared not only for Giving Tuesday, but then also we want to be prepared for the holiday season. So we, that's our goal, is to have that done.
Thank you.
So also in the, in the document, I wanted just to highlight under page, I'm sorry, eighteen point two-one, regards to the local hires and the community benefit agreement. So this is the report that you receive every month, regards to our projects. And they'll know the tier one and tier two and tier three. I know we did receive an email from a community member regards to that, and we forwarded that question on to the local, our local labor folks as it relates to that. But please note, this is only for the month of July, which we, I'm sorry, for June, when we first started a project. There's a month delay, as was mentioned previously. So next month, you should get more data regards to working on a project, should be more individuals, and that will help us regards to the who's tier one, tier two, and tier three.
Yeah, that wasn't a very nice email. They, they weren't nice in that email. I think they cursed at us. They cursed at us. I, I read, they cursed at us. That was not a nice email.
Did I say nice?
You kind of.
That was like a?
You kind of referred to like the email was a nice email, but it wasn't. It was a nasty email. But I thanked them for sending it to us, but I'm glad you referred the question on to somebody that could answer, even though we know a little bit of, because we did change it.
And, and the good part about this is that, that we're making this public. So we know who's on the projects, and we can have conversations with the local labor groups regards to tier one and tier through too. But I think the most important part is that this data is available that we have, and we, the board is ticking it on that you want to see this every single month. And we're doing that, providing this for the public, and it's publicly available, and we do a yearly report as they see these projects. But the key now is to work with the local labor and also with our contractors to know about the tier, to really talk about tier one and tier two, regards to hiring is not all tier three. But again, this is for the first month of the project.
Trustee Doppelman?
Yes, thank you. Just to, just to clarify, the, this is a follow-up to the new, the new development that is taking place to make sure that we're doing first, first right or first pass of employment for the residents that are within our, our service zip code?
I wouldn't say first pass. The, the goal is through our community benefits agreement to ensure that we're reaching out to tier one and tier two, tier one within our district for local labor. And so when they're, when they go out to tier three, that is a process to get to there. And so what we're trying to do is be very transparent regards to who are working on these projects, and to be able to report that not only to the board, but also yearly to the community.
Okay, so, so thank you, Dr. Curry, for that. So tier one is what, the zip codes within our district service area?
So if you, at the last board meeting, we provided the information about what's tier one and the zip codes, and we provide the information, I'm sorry. At the, at the June board meeting, we provided information, but I can share it again with you. But that's based off of what's, what's in our district, the tier one. And so, I'm just pulling it up real quick.
Yes, I.
So it includes.
I just wanted to go back and just to refresh my memory of what the different, like what zip codes and what areas are in the different.
Yeah, and so let me do it this way. Heather, we can, let me, just give me two seconds. No, I don't think she has it there. I can forge, in, in our community benefits agreement, it shows the tier one. And then we also shared the tier one with the, the board before, so we can be able to share that again. But it's, it's based off what's in our, our, our community benefits agreement, but the tier one is the ones that's located within our district. And then tier two is a ten-mile radius within our district. And so we provided, at the June meeting, we provided the zip codes within our district, and there's ten miles after that is tier two. And then tier three is L.A. County.
May I ask, can you just put maybe like on this just as a reminder? Because how you have the ten mile, and then you have like the remaining of L.A. County. Under tier one, can you just add like within our district service area, just as a reminder?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So what we would do, but see, so, so everyone has the information. So just on the first page, you would like for us to add in parentheses, the zip codes within our district?
Yes.
Okay. And that concludes my information items.
Item nineteen, Future Agenda Items.
So next month, we have the Compton Community College District final budget. We have a public hearing on the final budget. We have a presentation on guided pathways and success teams. And we also have a financial aid department update, and we're working on assistance bank oversight on your annual report. I might reduce this a little bit because there's a lot that's on the agenda. So I'll be working through this the next couple, next couple of days, because also the next board meeting, the board asked for, talk about community meetings, and that will be on the agenda for discussion. So I might have to move a couple of things around just because of, for time.
Item twenty, Oral Reports. Dr. Curry?
In the, for, I have a couple items. One is, we're excited about Professor Development Day, with our faculty and staff participating and management from nine to four in the gymnasium on August twenty-first. We're working on the final budget as relates to Compton Community College District. And we'll bring it back forward on September eighth, as I mentioned earlier, but then it'll be released this Friday. This last past week, I had the opportunity to speak at the California Student Aid Commission, which I included in my newsletter. I, I really appreciate the opportunity. I was able to talk about higher education and the work that we're doing at Compton College, but also to provide some encouraging words to the Student Aid Commission regards to things that they should consider as relates to adult learners and potential policy changes to support students. I think we're in an interesting time right now in higher education, as it, as we look at student completion and what that looks like, and ensure that students are able to see a return on their investment by going to a community college and completing their program and getting jobs with livable wages. And so it was a great opportunity that I had to speak at their, at their meeting last week in San Diego. And then today, I had the opportunity to, to attend the Investor's Ceremony at California State University for Dr. Johnson Ins, who is the new president at California State University, Los Angeles. And so we're excited to be able to be partnering with Cal State LA. As you, as you heard today, we have one of our students going there, and that's the second feeder for us after Cal State University, Dominguez Hills. And so that was a great event today, and I'm excited about the students that will be transferred to Cal State LA. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Menz?
Good evening, board. I had the amazing opportunity to attend the Community College League of California over the weekend. It was a very insightful opportunity where I managed to make a lot of network connections with the other college Board of Trustee members. A lot of knowledgeable tools that I could bring and utilize in this space at Compton College. And I was able to represent Compton College, may I say, very well. I had a team of individuals that were very interested in networking with me and learning more about all of the amazing opportunities and visionary projects that Compton College has, including and not limited to our onsite housing. So it was a great opportunity, a great moment, and I'm looking forward to other conferences in the future.
Trustee Calhoun?
I will do my best to make it short. First of all, thank you, everybody, for staying here so long with us. I appreciate it. And I, I know that for future agenda, Dr. Curry, I talked to you, I mentioned about the welding. And so I don't know if everybody saw the email that was received. I'll talk about myself. I can't talk about what y'all received. I received the email with so many pages about the welding class, what they're taking, what they're doing, and I got a lot of these emails. Some of the emails, two of the individuals no longer work here. It could be another one. And then other people still work here. And so I know that I actually, but I'm quite concerned about this email. So I hope that when you give, give your report and you give it back to us, you let us know that if this equipment is here on our campus, why it is or why it's not being used, what is the requirements, what is? How long the equipment has been here? When did it first, looked like the equipment's been here for a while. I could be wrong. And I just would like to know more about this, or, which I know, Dr. Curry, you will check this out, but I really have some serious concerns about this, especially if, if it is true, and it's easier for our students that are taking the welding class to be able to be certified here and not have to go someplace else. I don't know. You're our only one employee. I don't go snooping. I don't go asking. But I'm asking you. So let's find out what's going on, the real skinny and the real truth, and how this equipment can be used, period, for our students, and the cost, because I was reading where the cost of it, and then if they don't get certified, then they have to start all over again to be certified, did I say certi- certified, and, and get more money. And I don't want to go on about it, but I really want it, I'm going to tell you like this, an in-depth, I-N-D-E-P-T-H, did I spell it right? Okay. I would like to have an in-depth report about the welding test lab and welding, period, and how much money our students have lost by not being able to do it here, or how much they had to pay back again, over and over again. And I did read that article of that young lady, I think it was in The Wave or The Sentinel, whatever paper it was in. That was a beautiful article about this young lady. She got up here and spoke. And, and how, where she's working at now because of Compton, she still praised Compton College. Isn't it Emily, Emily Rubio? She still praised Compton College, because she was so glad that she had the opportunity to take that class here under the supervision welding teacher Pamela Richardson and other people. And, and I just loved what she was saying. And I think somebody else said they got a job at a, a young man got up there and said he had a job someplace all because of the class that he took here with the instructor Pamela Richardson. So I say this, when one person says something, you say, uh, when two people say something, you say, hmm. When three, four, five, I marked it down, something is going on. Something is being left out, something is not being said. And if that, we do have that equipment, then it's, it really is a shame that being underutilized. If we have the permits, if we have, what do you call those little things? Not just the permits, but if we have the permits for the machinery, permit to be able to use the machine, trained on how to use the machine, took the classes on how to use the machine, and all that involved in the machine, and it's not adequately being deployed, or whatever, how you want to say it. We need to get this, because I can see Compton College, in my opinion, not a welder, I could see Compton College really saving a lot of money for our students. In-depth report, please. Thank you.
Trustee Doppelman?
Yes, thank you. I, I had the opportunity to tour Southwestern College this past week, and I got to see their facilities, like their basic needs facility, and their pantry and their lending closet. So I'm glad that we're more and more, as things are starting to develop here, that we're starting to have more of those conversations. So I'm looking forward to not just the partnerships that we, that, that are forging with being able to provide the basic needs for our students, but also I'm looking forward to being able to see what the lending closet looks like. And just some of the additional services that we're providing our students as we're talking about C E T, CTE, and we're talking about their certificates, and we're talking about the workforce, and just being able to help our, continue to expand and help out our students in that, as they pursue those endeavors as well. And I would also like to do a shout-out. I'm kind of excited about this. August thirty-first, Sunday, August thirty-first, is HBCU night and at the, at the crypto, at the CryptoArena.com. And just to remind students, of course, not just with HBCU night, but we'll also have like a college, there's also a college fair. And just to remind students of all their options. I know we talked about our students that are also transferring. We had students that are graduating. I know our former student trustee is going to an HBCU. She will be attending Clark Atlanta. But just also to remind students of all their, to participate and explore all their options, and as a reminder that we have the Cal HBCU grant. And that's all I have. I know that was a lot.
Trustee? Trustee Lopez?
No report.
And that's no report for me too. Moving on to item twenty-one. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is September eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Close session begins at five P.M. Open session begins at six P.M. And this meeting is now adjourned at eight-twenty.